Call me the order stands for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's what you do.
Trustee Bell?
Here.
Trustee Brewer, here. Trustee Grant.
Yeah.
Trustee Duzinski, here. Trustee Todd, here. Trustee Williams, here.
The word is coming, so we want to... We want to the approval of minutes. I'll ask for motion to approve the general proceedings for the committee meeting of the whole of October 6, 2020.
Ooh, second.
So a move by trustee Williams, the second round trustee, does any question?
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Duzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll ask for motion to approve the proceedings, general proceedings of the board meeting of October 13, 2020. Ooh.
Second.
A move by trustee Bell, second round trustee Duzinski, are there any questions?
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Duzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I have number five, couple of comments. Our question to Congress, the direction to the mayor, he speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for three minutes and may not engage in debate in Congress class or rebuttal. Please state your name when you come up.
Mr. Iman, hand out the pass out to the board, they don't want to pass out individually or we're too much.
So you got something to pass out?
Yes.
Sure, you can pass it out to the...
Let Mike just turn that one.
No. Mr. Iman, ahead of it. My name is Rosen Williams Baye, for the record. I'm coming to you today as the director of the Nancy On the County Public Library with a couple of clarifications to statements that were recently placed on Saw Village Facebook page. Because this page, John's Village name is logo, it's my assumption that the board can identify who maintains it and can therefore pass along these statements. Number one, the article stated that we do not identify the being saw village. Our library name is usually Saw Village Library. In the eighties, a library board decided to change the name in the honor of former library board trustee and village clerk Nancy On the County after her tragic death. She was an instrumental in assisting in the referendum required to renew the Saw Village library district. Because of these efforts and her dedication to the library community, our district and library was named after her, similar to that Edward C. Community Center that was dedicated in these as well. Number two, we are being antiquated and out of touch. Since I became the director, the library has undergone many to undermine many changes. We have updated and maintained our website, created an email to serve that residents can sign up for received information regarding programming, new books, events, closings, and much more. We've updated and maintained our Facebook page and created a new Facebook page for the presence of the library community. We've installed electronic signs helping with the community and for our presence of programming. We have purchased a color cabinet and continued to update our computers to ensure that they have the newest software for our future needs. We open for curbside service and reopen to the public for other libraries in our surrounding areas. This allowed us to leave the ease of our residence and residence out of communities sooner rather than later. It was mentioned about the cost of the free food at the library. I'm not aware of the free food from the library, other than the food that's used during our programming, which is accounted for accordingly. If the author was referring to the free food pop-up turned on by the Illinois department's home and soft voice, there was no library cost for this. We offered space, we assisted in the community service awareness. We are not responsible for any purchasing of the food or its actual contents. Why did the library charge, and I'm quoting here, young black kids a dollar to use the computer? The library does not classify any form of charges based on programming or race. Due to grant funding, requirements, computers can only be checked out to adult cards. Adults can pay a dollar for the bell library card, two dollars for jar residence or state IP. The library requisition was dumped down, and curse this hate, offense to that, I was in psychology, I was vet in psychology. I was a volunteer at the library from twelve fifteen. I was employed at the library from September nineteen ninety-six to January two thousand. I worked at the Paul's Research Library for several semesters from two thousand, two thousand and one. I became a part-time employee in two thousand sixteen, full-time employee in two thousand seventeen, and applied requisition then. Since my tenure, I have increased programming, increased community involvement and awareness, and increased circulation numbers. I cannot speak to how the position was posted then, but I can say that every position under my tenure has been posted in-house, on Facebook, and our website, and on radio. We remain a safe space for all of our community and invite everyone here to visit us to see what really happens here. This article makes it apparent that many people here have not set the collection for years at all. I wanted to make sure that I presented this to the board as a whole because Saw Village Facebook page is where this came from. The village is name, the village is logo, so anything that anybody would look at that page, it would look like this entity in this building is downgrading another taxing body in the community. It's not appropriate. And since I said, since it's our name and our logo as town, someone's got to know who's writing it so that they can definitely... Thank you, Mrs. Lee, that was me, thank you. So somebody obviously who I'm gonna give some credit, I wanna make sure...
Are you talking to us or you talking to us?
Yes, I'm talking to you, I'm talking to the board. Well, heck, get me...
Hey, hey, no one else? Hey! Excuse me, excuse me.
This is the issue right here. So what I'm saying to the board is, as a whole, your name and your logo is being used to degrade other taxing bodies. I'm working to be able to promote programming in this village, I'm working to be able to promote things for the children, and that counterproductive with a separate taxing body is saying negative things about other taxing body. Especially implying anything to do with race and racial culture that we live in. I think that's inappropriate, I think if a personal Facebook page wanted to say this, I think that's great. They can downgrade library if they want to, if it's an individual. As a board, it's not appropriate. So when I was a trustee, I was informed that the mayor could reach out through their attorneys to find out who had owned the IP address. And they could ask and give them a cease and desist letter to tell them to stop using the name and logo. That current mayor, that mayor at the time, chose not to do that. I'm asking that this mayor take the opportunity to go to the village attorneys and send a cease and desist letter to why I'm looking for the IP address to stop using the name and logo. Should the mayor choose not to do that, this is again a situation where trustees, four or more trustees can get together, talk to the village attorney, and ask the cease and desist letter be sent to the person who has the IP address. If you don't know who it is, your IT person, general type, can find out. You can talk to your attorneys, you can send that. I'm asking that the board as a whole realize that the library is another taxing body that's here to serve publicly, not just individual needs. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. House, for your time.
My name is Elizabeth Norca.
Can't hear you.
You gotta talk to the microphone. My name is Elizabeth Norca. I am a member of the library board.
Tell it to the microphone.
Can you still hear me now?
No, talk into the mic, please.
You can pick it up.
My name is Elizabeth Norca. I am a member of the library board.
I'm nervous up here.
I'm sorry. I'm really upset with like what Rosie's just said on Facebook. I think as a board, we have been very visibly irresponsible. And our director is very much family oriented. I don't know who this person is that's writing this or cursing. But I have not seen anyone other than my own children and a few others that are in this room right now at a board meeting. So if you're going to say something negative about something, you should know what you're talking about. And it's very upsetting. I think us on the board, we volunteer, we're not paid. And this just upsets me no end, because I give up my time and my energy. And I encourage everyone to come check out the library, it has really improved this back as patronage, the kids program, that's really about it. Please come and check this out, thank you.
Talk into the microphone.
Frank Williams, sixteen thirty, way to sixteen, please. First of all, I want to apologize to the way I acted, you know, as I said, at my door. Second thing is that you need to stop putting stuff out wrongly about people, it's not nice and it's not appropriate. If you're wrong there, wrong there, please act back to them, or please act back to them. And quit putting out stuff that has no fairness or dignity at all. I'm sick of child, now the thing I feel, my wife will bother me, she's a trustee, but when you put out lies, that comes to those different things. Now, you gotta understand something, she's my wife first, trustee second. And my idea of these things that you want to put out about her, please put it out there that's true. Now Frank Williams, that you see standing here, is a man. I love my family and treat them what I take, I will protect them at the necessary, if it's not a threat, this is a promise. So what I like to understand is I'm not threatening nobody, that is not what I'm doing, so don't leave just saying Frankie threatens nobody. So I like to say this, two things out, if we come to this board meeting, and come to the board meeting for the purpose of what the board meeting is set up to do, who wouldn't have our business, who wouldn't have thing on the streets if I say anything, how come people do this, how come so? I do go around, face, and nobody, what they do, how they do, cause it really doesn't matter to me. I'm one person that's standing here, that got anything, anything that a poor man want, I have. So what I would like to do, and clear a case, threatening nobody, I didn't do, I'm not threatening nobody. One thing I'm gonna make clear, is that, that's my wife, that's all the thing I'm saying.
Linda Washington, just a couple of things I want to break up tonight. First of all, I do want to say to trustee Duzinski, I gave you my notice of loss of your mom, Frankie, and your family. Now also, just a few concerns that I want to bring up tonight after talking to several residents who have the Saw Village citizens for public awareness and for the downtown community of Saw Village. Looking on Facebook is just a way that people get a lot of information that's going on, and what's going on in Saw Village. Unfortunately, because we don't have a communication with the Saw Talk or any other publication that comes out that legitimately to let people know what's going on, people have to resort to what they read on Facebook. One of the articles that some of the residents was talking about was the amount of money that's been collected from the gaming stores that's in the village, primarily from the gas and wash. And I did also see that article that residents had some concerns about, where approximately over fifty thousand dollars have been collected from January to today. And so we were just wondering where is that money going, that's being collected from the gaming, approximately fifty thousand dollars, I think it was an article put in there by Gary Holcomb, who was pretty accurate about things that he reports, and I'm sure he has no problem with providing the documentation that he had. Also, I just want to remind the trustees that they are responsible to follow the money that's going on in the village. Wherever money is flowing, you're supposed to know about it, you shouldn't have to foil it, it should be something that you should have access to. And that also includes, and people let me know if I'm wrong, addresses at the end of everybody speaking, vendors and contractors and anybody else that have contracts with the village, all of the trustees should know about it. When I was a trustee, we had fireworks, Rose is still here, everybody had to review that firework contract, and they had to make sure that it was a legitimate company, how much it was gonna cost to have a firework, it wasn't a secret, but only a couple of people knew about it, but all the board didn't know about it. And I'm talking about the movie that they had in the park, talking to some of the people, I have found that some trustees didn't know anything about the contract for the movie in the park, did you say time?
I said one minute.
Okay. Some trustees didn't know anything about the contract for the movie in the park, I think it was an excellent idea, but we have to maintain transparency. Real quickly, when Travis was trustee, he wanted to have a petticoat over here, the trustees told him no, because they didn't see the contract for the zoo. So if anything is going on, anything is happening in the village, all of the trustees should see the contract, know who it is, know who's standing for it. I have booked that private dollars, you all still to know where the money came from, I asked who paid for the movie. We had employees out there all day from three o'clock to eleven o'clock, everybody, but they paid for being out there for the four and a half hours and the movie. And I'm just asking for you to get some clarity, on the minutes, the council panel was still out on the back table, and they had said they was gonna start putting that back out there. Some of the people about the residents and people were open with us on this, know what's going on.
All right, in regards to this communication that we get, I'm sure all the trustees get it. I cannot answer for a Facebook page that is not sanctioned by the judge, a person wants to use that name. You're right, I can ask if the board wants to take legal action against it, and will be costly, but that's what the board would like to do, everyone's gonna hold the money out to do that. But to make the comment that a taxing body is talking about a lower taxing body, that Facebook page talking about is not a taxing body. So, but these five times, these five points that are on here, I appreciate bringing those to our attention. And we've all learned, but I have at this time, as mayor, I have no comments on them because, as I said before, I don't, and I cannot sanction a page that is not backed or paid for by the village residents. So it's just like anything else, when they put anything else out there, period, not just on Facebook and any other, bigger than they claim to do about anybody else, your family or whatever, I mean. It's a shame that that does happen, it's a shame that it hasn't been happening for years, not just, it's not the first time, it's been people who've had their families dragged over the mud, I would say at least eight, nine years. So this is not something that's brand new, it's a shame that we have to do this, it's a shame that the person has to resort to that. But then again, as far as mayor, as far as he being mayor to sanction a particular page on Facebook, that kind of power. I do understand that the library is for the village, and that's where it should be, it is for the village, it's paid for by the taxpayer money, so it should be holding to the village. And I know that they've done a lot of things in the past few years to try to change some of the things that were going on, and maybe that all these things that are here, I understand, I see. As far as the comment about family members, it's a shame that we have to resort to that, but this has been going on, I know for maybe three or four years now. And I don't know what to do to stop that, I just hope people try to be more positive when you try to, one thing, talking about a trustee or a mayor or a public official. But when you have to resort to a family member, it's happened to me numerous occasions, it's a shame, I don't say much anymore, I've got a lot of flack behind it. But when you do say something, there's another incident, somebody else, those people are back and forth, but it's a shame that we have, that people have to resort to a family member when it comes to any political aspect in the village. As far as the money collected from the gaming that went to the general fund, it is... It is absolutely, it's noted, and I'm sure with all the support that we have, we're one on. It's not, we don't have anything to put out on a regular basis, but every time we do our quarterly reports, it shows that, you know, where the money is collected from, so that's not a problem, yes. What is it used for? Just like the water fund money, it's used for expenses in the village, and that's another, that's another income that we have coming in, and we use it for as a real thing else. As far as the movie in the park, the board was given the cost and was given everything about the movie in the park before it happened. Also, it was a hundred percent money that was actually donated, so it was privately donated by different people of different entities, so it did not cost taxpayers a dime to put that movie in, that movie out there, put it in there. It was money that was racially appreciative by these people that, the public, and then also our clerk went out and, she was actually able to get all the money, and she made enough to get it, and that's literally speaking, she actually did it. To get the money to put the movie in the park on, so it was not a taxpayer's expense. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Facebook page, Saw Village TV news is the only Facebook page that we have that official as far as backed by the, by the village, just Saw Village TV page. Saw Village TV page that's on Facebook. So that's the only page that is backed by the, by the village. Um, you report, mayor's report, I have a proclamation which I'd like to read at this time. And by reading this, I would like the trustees, please stand for this particular one. Whereas Cheryl Schultz spent many years volunteering for the village of Saw Village from the nineteen eighties through two thousand and nine. And whereas Cheryl served as chairperson for the Community Relations Committee on Planning and Honoring Volunteers. Volunteer for the village annual Christmas basket committee, helped to raise funds and provide food and gifts to many families in the village, in Saw Village for many years. Served as a volunteer on the Parks and Rec Committee, and was the former owner of Mount Ed's cleaning service that provided cleaning services to the village. And whereas Cheryl Schultz was beloved wife and former trustee of former trustee James Schultz and loving mother of the current trustee Sherri Duzinski. Now, therefore being proclaimed by the mayor and the board of trustees of the village of Saw Village, Cook County, that we recognize the many years of dedicated service to the Saw Village Municipality community and to the people of Saw Village that Cheryl Schultz has provided. And be it further proclaimed that the village board recognizes the dedication and commitment that Cheryl Schultz has put forth serving the community and residents of Saw Village. And be it further proclaimed that the village board hereby requests to distribute and copy and certify copy of this proclamation to trustee Sherri Duzinski and former trustee James Schultz. And that it's been spread upon the records of the village of Saw Village, dedicated this day, the twenty seventh of October, twenty twenty. Signed, Mayor Jerry Burgess and Attorney Officer Martin Campbell, Woodville. Next item I have is probably something that a lot of people have been impressed and talked about is the new COVID nineteen restrictions for Region Four and Region Ten, believe it or not, we're Region Ten. And the latest one I have is from, this one was from Monday, yesterday, and where... Where we're involved for Region Ten, it says that enhancements will be in effect until the following metrics are met. A decrease in average test positivity rate to over six point five over a three-day period. A decrease in hospital admissions for the COVID nineteen, like illness over a three-day period. And number three, both ICU and the medical or surgical availability at or above twenty percent over a seven-day period. If all metrics are met, then Region Ten will be allowed to return to regular phase four. So the part that we're gonna have to be under is, and until I see something, when I do see more, I will bring it back. But as of tomorrow, all of the in-house restaurants or restaurants that has dining in will now become carryouts. And... This is going to affect, bars and restaurants will be closed by eleven PM, they may not reopen until six in the morning the following day. Bars and restaurants can serve papers at tables with outdoor seating only. All tables should be placed six feet apart, no seating to multiple parties at one table. No indoor, no indoor service or seating is allowed. No ordering seating or congregating that the bars allow, and it is recommended that the bar stools be removed, no indoor service or seating is allowed. No standing or congregating indoors or outdoors while waiting for a table or excited or exiting the premises. Meetings, social events, and gatherings are limited to the lesser of twenty-five people or twenty-five percent overall room capacity. No party buses allowed. The last one, gaming locations and casinos must be closed by eleven PM, and are limited to twenty-five percent capacity and must follow the migrations for bars and restaurants that happen. So basically, I guess, gaming parks are open, but the... So basically, I guess, gaming parks are open, but the restaurants are closed. Okay, well, this is what came down. And so we will tomorrow send these and give this out to the businesses that apply us to. And right now, I know we're looking at having some events here in the future. Halloween will still go on, but I'm still trying to find out about the trunk of tree. And I'm going to get clarity on that before we go any further on that too. But right now, Halloween and the trunk of tree is still, we're going to go on. Now, the trunk of tree is outside, so it shouldn't be much gathering in Halloween is coming to the home. Those are two things that I wanted to bring. If there's any other questions after the meeting, we can talk. Or tomorrow if you want to call Village Hall, if you have any more clarity, or want any more clarity, I'll be glad to provide that. With that being said, Village Clerk, uh,
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And on the heels of your report that you just gave, I'm not certain how some of what I'm getting ready to report will be impacted simply because, um, coming up, well, tomorrow is not going to impact because tomorrow we're having a virtual property tax appeal forum. And that is through Zoom. And this is for the entire Bloom Township. So anyone that has property in the village and you want to know the appeal process, that information is on the Salt Village E News page. And if you do not frequent Facebook, then feel free to contact the Village Clerk's office and I will send you the link, okay? Uh, moving on, on November the 19th, the National Kidney Foundation is going to be here. I believe trustee James reported on that last week. And they are supposed to be here to provide wonderful screening opportunities. I mean, and it's at no fee at all. Now, you know, when we talk about some of the other Facebook pages, and all are included, and I've mentioned this before, if you want to report on something positive that's going on in the village, visit the Salt Village E News page. This information is there. And you can share it. So then that way, people will see that you're operating in a degree of fairness and equity opposed to just throwing anything negative. So I am going to appeal to, I know that there are two people, at least two people, three people in here now that have Facebook pages. I'm going to ask you to post both of these events on your page. One other thing that I'd like for you to post on your page, if you don't mind, in November on the 21st, we're having a candidates forum. This is not the same that we usually have in March. This one is solely for those who are seeking, seriously seeking to be a candidate in the upcoming consolidated elections on April the 6th, 2021. If you're interested, you know someone who's interested, we will invite you out. If it's too many, then maybe I'll move it and change it to a Zoom meeting. I'll be flexible where that's concerned. But if you can remember, board members, this was planned before and it was canceled because only one person registered for it. And in times like this, we have to have people to register for our events. So far, when I checked yesterday, again, only one person had registered. The deadline is November the 9th, and it is a very thorough deadline. Okay? And I'm hoping to see some of the trustees who are up for reelection to be there. Some of the stuff you probably know already, but you know what? You can always know something more. And then I'm going to ask any of the trustees to communicate with me to let me know which one of you would be on the program so that you can present the duties of a trustee from a very informed mindset. I cannot be before you trustees and people within my voice without letting you know that it is very important that we G-O-T-V, get out the votes. We must vote, we must engage all of our family and friends in the voting process. It's recommended now that they develop a plan. What are they going to do? How are they going to get there? Are they doing early vote, are they doing mail-in ballots? Are they doing mail-in ballots and then decide they want to do onsite? However it is, but I can say that if you are doing early voting, and it's probably too late now because we've been announcing it so much. But the South Chicago Senior Center on Enterprise Diet, there has not been a line, there's not been any way. You just walk up there and go straight into get registered and get your ballot and do what you need to do. So you may want to do that. Trustees, I would like to consider putting on the committee report, on the committee meeting, a subject or a topic that I had discussed a while back, but we never went through with it. And that is public comment. Public comment, the method for public comment. And I would like to propose something to you that I have seen done in numerous other cases for open meetings such as this. And it goes with the Open Meetings Act. So we'll talk about that a little bit later. And Mr. Mayor, that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Village Administrator, Mr. Jim Hardy.
Thank you, Mayor. Quite a number of things tonight. First of all, construction on the I-394 water main replacement project is completed and the village has applied for the operating permit for the new water main. Construction for the West Elevated Tank Repainting Project has started and is in the seminal phase. Construction for the 221st Street culvert replacement project has started and is also in the seminal phase. Construction for the 2020 Tiff resurfacing and intersection improvements project has started and is likewise in the seminal phase. Bronson is nearly completed with fire hydro replacement project design with an expected bid opening in early November, late November at the latest. Bronson is nearly completed with the sanitary sewer cleaning and televising project design with an expected bid opening in later November. And finally, Bronson is finishing gathering the documentation requested by Ida for their MFTI. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Village Administrator, Jerry Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Board members, last meeting, we talked a little bit about fire hydrants. We do every meeting, being facetious. But Public Works Director Kevin Wheeler and I have discussed a game plan that we had asked for for this hydro project. We discuss it every day since our last committee meeting. I know it's an important issue for everybody and we try to get this thing as reward as we possibly can. Uh, we will be the public works that work on the hydrants on the south side of Salt Trail, Salt Trail Road. And the private contractor would work on the hydrants on the north side of Salt Trail Road. This is because the public works guys have a better handle on these south end hydrants. They have a better knowledge of the pipe and valves that need to be replaced on the south side. Our route of P also includes or indicates that the private contractor would work on the hydrants on the north side of Salt Trail Road. Our plan will be that we update every week of what's going on with our hydro program, discussing the past weekend's work and also on the next scheduled weekend's project. Our first weekend, public works are starting the hydrants Saturday, November 7th, if we go with the Saturday program. We have charted the hydrants that need repair and how we can get more than one hydrant fixed at a time, depending on the location. On the very first weekend, we're shooting for four hydrants, all on the same main. And then we'll go from there and try to get as many hydrants, only two at a time, we get down to the individual ones that need special handling. Add to the workload is the replacement of the main water valves. And if you're familiar with our water system, we have main water mains that have valves that need shut off. And each hydrant is supposed to have a shut off by itself. The additional valve behind you, but if the water main shut off is close enough to our hydrant program, our public works guys want to go and place that valve also. So it makes a lot of sense that if we're digging up the street and there's a main valve that's bad, and they know which ones are bad, it would make it behoove us to continue on and get that valve replaced. So somewhere down the line, we're going to reopen that street. I'm sure you're familiar with the shut offs. You know, each water main has a shut off, each hydrant has a shut off, they're supposed to. If they're in working condition, then each home has a shut off, which is a completely another project that we need to work on. So these are appropriate, we're trying to get to. Some of these things haven't been touched in 50 years. Some are working very little, some are not working at all. And then, of course, is going to be the boil water issue when the water main lines are shut down. And that's going to have to be issued and followed by a residence for it notified and affected. So the game plan is not a perfect game plan, but a plan to move forward with record every week so you know what was done, how long we're going to be doing it, and what we have to do for the future. Trees. So the next issue is trees. And we've talked about trees for a while. Public Works Union has tenderly agreed to allow the village to contract a private tree contracting company to remove the larger trees from our pathways. And we're doing this as a project. The agreement reached will be the removal of trees 36 inches in diameter and above. So it will be at our waist, 36 inches of diameter of a tree and bigger on the pathway, which adds up to, in Kevin's estimation, 67 trees. And the same kind of dynamics also. Uh, we, Kevin has reached out to four different companies, gotten four proposals on tree removal from the licensed and bonded companies. And we will discuss this, obviously, at committee meeting before we move any further. But that's just something I want you to know we'll be forward on also. Uh, one of the pumps on well two needs to be replaced. We've gone to regular inspection of it. Uh, we received one price for that pump, looking for another price before we move forward on it. But it's very important that we get a new pump for well two. We have been offered some very, some free slightly used play equipment and handicap accessible stairs. I'm a good friend of ours. Uh, our public works department is working on ways to get that picked up for us, hopefully by next week, and get that into Carroll Park for the mayor's direction for the children to play on. Uh, I've also sent each one to do a memorandum of understanding that I have worked out with the realtors to stop the legal battle that we have been going after the last past year. There's some simple changes that are drawn up by the attorney. And along with the realtors and myself, we tried to get a recollection here. Uh, this is to be discussed hopefully at our next committee, housing committee meeting, as will be taking place the next couple of weeks. I'm asking the committee to discuss, take a look at it, discuss it, and bring it back to the board for any suggestions that they have so we can discuss this at our committee meeting after the housing committee. And this MOU, or memorandum of understanding, will finally put this issue behind us. Because as much as they have a cost with their attorneys, our attorneys' costs with us also. And it's not cheap and it continues to linger on, although we've done very well in court. I think it's time for it to end. Demolitions. We have some homes that are, need to get demoed. We have homes that have fired, that have had fires. The roofs are missing, the back entries are missing. We have gone to our attorneys to get them in the court. We received two search warrants that the chief and our code enforcement officer is working on to get in the house, do a report, get that to the judge, so we can get an emergency demolition order on that. We have one from the Ida that covers that demo project. So we're trying to get some of these older homes that have been burned and sitting there for a while knocked down finally. And hopefully someone will start to rebuild that. And finally, at the last meeting, there was a discussion about things that needed to get done. One thing was the union contract, the public works union contract. And one of the reasons that it's not signed is because we haven't got it back yet. We get the original one, they got some changes they wanted to make. It's in our attorney's hands now, when they get it for us, then we'll sign it in their court. But I will make sure we get that done, signed, sealed, and delivered. And that's the end of my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I do have a question, uh, Mr. Hees. As far as the cost compares, the cost, we had asked for the cost for the fire hydrants. Uh, I just wanted to get a ballpark here. Because the last time we talked about is we had two different costs. How much would cost, uh, how much the fire hydrants would be, like the labor costs. And then it kept changing.
What we had before was two different kinds of proposals. One, they were hired two part-time. And then we had my program that we put together. But I won't get you the exact amount of what that's, I had, I had a mic proposal, the cost of the hydrants and the cost of the employees. We were told that the cost is a little bit higher for the hydrants than I have. I'll get that exact amount.
Okay, that's a feeling to see that. And then you also stated about the trees. You have, I think, did the union okay 60 replacements or are they just okay?
Well, they were going with that size, they were looking at a bigger choice.
As far as, I mean, that we could, uh,
I reached out to them today. I had to give them the number of trees that we had, 36 inches in circumference and larger.
Okay, if you want to get started in two weeks, at least to know where we're at and do most of your things started.
Mr. Mayor, I want that already from before we start here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Department of Commerce, Department of Finance, Administration, Director Michelle Brice.
The Finance Department is requesting approval of disbursements totaling $238,633.99. This amount consists of payroll and benefits in the amounts of $137,314.09 for the payday of 10/23/2020. In addition to accounts payable registered dated 10/27/2020 in the amount of $238,633. The forensic audit and independent audit are progressing. We hope to have a forensic audit concluded and independent auditor is on-site by late November, early December. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Fire Department, Chief Stephen Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Fire Department responded to 100 calls for the service a period of October 8th through October 22nd. With the most serious was the plane crash of April 30th, 394. We assisted state police for about four hours. Uh, we provided the landing zone for the UCAN helicopter. Uh, we received a letter that night from the UCAN director stating that our ground workers did an amazing job. Uh, we did all that we could. We allowed the patient to speak to his family before taking off and everything. And so I just want to give my guys a public, uh, good job. We don't see things like that happen too often. And so for this being our first, I think they did an amazing job. Unfortunately, the patient did bounce away from his injuries. Uh, a reminder that COVID-19 virus A reminder that COVID-19 virus is still on the rise. We're seeing this, I know we've been hearing this all night, but we're seeing a rise in cases every day. With our ambulance company that's going out and servicing our community. We're seeing a lot more and more ambulance calls for possible COVID exposure. So I just want to encourage everybody to make sure you wash your hands, mask it up if you're going in public, and wiping down everything to make sure that you can protect yourself. If everybody protects themselves, we can try to cut down on this spread. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Police department, Chief Malcolm White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Bill's Board. The calls and service reports for the period of October 14th through tonight, the police department responded to more than 440 calls for service. During that same time, there are officers made eight arrests. There is a portion of our report that police somebody who got in a package about department allegations. We're going to bypass that tonight, because the family involved was unable to attend. When they do get the opportunity, we will have those officers in. We thought it was important that the young lady be here, so if she's not attending, I don't know. The other point is our mountainous investigations. You know, so often, especially the people who, or I think in my chat with the chief, it's hard to gauge the measure of crime prevention, because you're preventing it. So, I mean, the only thing people might say, oh, it's violating or something, I agree. But sometimes, as we're going through running through numbers and targeting certain things, targeting certain issues, it becomes measurable. From July to September. Now, my report says since July 2020, but it actually means July through September. This does not include October. The Salt Village Police Department recovered over 22 illegal guns from the streets of Salt Village. That's our department, the police department, the Salt Village Police Department. I know a lot of times you guys see the sheriff's phone around. But just our police department recovered over 22 guns on the streets. Since then, 10 suspects were charged with weapons offenses, including several parolees who have been taken off the street. The Salt Village Police Department will continue to work towards developing methods of gathering information and vigilant patrol, as well as investigative tactics, to take more violent criminals off the streets. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Bill's Board, that ends my report.
Thank you. That was well done. Reports of trustees and standing committees. Public Service Committee trustee Gary Vell. Public Service Committee trustee Bernice Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. First thing is that I want to, we're working on a purchasing order project with the finance director, so we're going to try to develop something that will develop the purchase order for everything that we buy in the village. We haven't got started yet, so just to let you know, and all the trustees know that we need to start, you guys need to come up with some ideas about what you need when we do a purchase order. The second thing I would like to talk about is that when I ask for something to be put on the agenda, for some reason it's not getting there. I don't understand. There is an ordinance out there that says that only two trustees need to put something on the agenda. For some reason, a couple of times before, the items that I want to put on the agenda was not put on there. So I'd like some clarification on that, because there is a Salt Village ordinance that says two trustees should can put something on the agenda. And the third thing is that moving forward, I want to congratulate everybody who participated on getting the fire hydrant project started. It's a win-win for the residents. We've been looking for this for the last couple of decades. So I'm hoping this thing will start next week, the fire hydrant project. And I really appreciate everybody's help with this project. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, budget and finance, trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have to speak to the finance director, and we are going to try to get updated budget actuals pretty soon, in the next few weeks. And we'll understand where we stand the first five months of our fiscal year. Also in regards to public safety, I'm sorry, public services. I want to say that I would like to make a request, though Mr. Hurkies, he just stepped out. But before his time started, we used to have a map that had all the fires, just that they were color-coded by, you know, red, yellow, and green, whether they're working, not working, or in repair. I'd like to bring that back, and I think that we should have it here every Tuesday at meetings, so we can track the progress of those hydrants, and see where we stand with the basis, see what has been fixed and not fixed. So, he just stepped out, but I just want to make that note from the board, that I've made a request of him, so we can see how that looks. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Housing and the government relations committee trustee Cherry Jazinski. The ordinance review committee trustee Little Tarr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The ordinance review committee is not scheduled to meet yet. I want to get together and find out when we can meet with Cook County health person and our community development director to work on that ordinance that has to do with the pop-up stands, the tents or whatever that are going up. So, I know we haven't, we don't have a meeting next week here, but I'm hoping to have in the next couple of weeks that we, our committee will get together and discuss that. We have several other things too. I also noticed that on the agenda, there's an ordinance to be passed, but that needs to come back to our committee. Because we need to add the language. So that will be in the next couple of weeks, and that ends my report.
Okay, Public Events Committee trustee Devon Bridge, will you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who donated or attempted to donate blood last Saturday. 19 donations could save 57 lives, so I thank everyone who participated. The next blood drive is scheduled for December 26th. This Saturday is the final food box distribution under the current USDA contract that is being held by our sponsor. A new allocation is being bid as we speak. I will let everyone know as soon as the big box distribution can begin. This Saturday will be held at 8 o'clock at Bloom Trail High School. We will have 800 boxes of fresh fruit, vegetables, dairy, milk, cheese, and eggs. The Saturday allocation is totally separate from the weekly pop-ups conducted by another organization for which I am about to. Thousands of families per week are provided with a variety of foods. Where it is true that some occasionally could be slightly outdated, or about to be outdated, I guarantee you that it is up to the person who receives the food to decide whether or not they want to use that food, because this food is being distributed from this main event to all food countries throughout the South suburbs. And I'm also proud to say that the Salt Village Public Events has a Facebook page, which keeps residents informed as much as they can about events that are happening in and around Salt Village, so that is just another official Salt Village page that people can relate to. And I did try to, as the Public Events Committee, bring back the Salt Talk when I first got elected, when I first got the Public Events Committee. I asked to actually bring back the Public Relations Committee, which was in charge of the Salt Talk and the website, and I was denying that. That offer is still on the table. I would be more than happy to bring back the Salt Talk and update the website as part of that committee. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee. Oh, okay. First, just reminding me that after the period of time, our conference call does disconnect itself. So, I apologize if someone is on there, but I didn't hear anybody on there, so in that particular, it is disconnected now, so we're, so for the record, we should say that now, it does disconnect itself. So we wanted to talk.
It disconnects when no one else is on the line other than the caller, other than me. So if someone else is on the line, it would disconnect you. But if it's just me, the caller, then it shuts down.
I'm new business. I'll accept a motion to approve the payroll accounts payable in the amount of $375,848.89. Move by trustee Bell, second by trustee Jazinski, any questions?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. I believe we're not going to bring up, I just think at the time, there's some, trustee just got through like two days. There's some more things that have to be presented. So we're going to table that particular motion. And I'm going to add another 12 comments, comments from the mayor trustees. I'll start with trustee.
What question, Mayor? Do you have to formally tape one?
I'm sorry, it's not ready. You're right, and now it's not taped. I made, I'm not wrong. I'm just not going to bring it along, and you're right, it's not taped. It's just not going to be presented. Comments, I'll start with trustee Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, that map that trustee Grant was referring to has been brought up, not recently. And I thought I heard the mayor say you didn't know where it was. Do you know where that map is?
No, that's why I took off that map. It used to be one, you're right, and you used to be all the time with Star, that was not even on for a while.
So we don't know where it's at, unfortunately, but that was a great resource as far as the hydrants. And second of all, it's been stated that there have been no hydrants prepared or replaced in the past two years. I beg to differ. I was asking to have a more precise report tonight on exactly how many hydrants. So I was wondering, maybe in two weeks, we can, if not bring back that half, we can bring something similar, but also a report of how many have been repaired recently. And finally, I'd like to, I'm just going to read this, I'm not making any comment about it, other than the fact that I think this applies to everyone that attends this meeting, whether it's a board member, an audience member, or a staff member. In our code, in section 30.36, calling unruly member to order expulsion. A, if any member transgresses the rules of the corporate authorities, the mayor or any trustee may call him to order. And when called to order, the member shall take his seat unless permitted to explain. B, any member acting or appearing in a disgraceful manner or using violent and insulting language to or about any members of corporate authorities or who does not obey the orders of the chair shall on motion be censured by a majority vote of the members present or expelled by two-thirds vote of all members elected. Provided however, that a trustee may not be expelled a second time for the same offense. I've only seen this happen once in 12 years, and I really don't want to see that happen again. Because as far as our behavior at board meetings, and as far as the social media, as bad as it gets, I think the one thing that we all need to remember is we're all human. We make mistakes. We can own up to our mistakes, but we don't need to be lied upon, and we don't need to be talked to in a negative manner when it's totally unnecessary. We all have families that are affected by what's happening on social media. We have residents that are affected when there's lies and mistruths that are placed on social media. And our residents deserve more when they come to a board meeting or when they watch a tape. I happened to listen to a tape, I don't usually go back and re-listen to the tapes of the board meetings, but I did listen to the tape of last week's meeting. And in between, when we were on recess, the tape continued. And an individual was cussing and discussing and making untruths about the board and the situations that are happening at the village. And I find that offensive, number one, this is at our board meeting, where the mayor and the trustees are conducting business, but during recess. The language that came out of that person's mouth was, continued to be taped, where the tape should have been stopped and restarted as the meeting stopped and started. That's my opinion, but all I'm saying is, when we're in this building, or when we're referring to the village, Salt Village, can we have decorum? Can we have respect? How can we try to honor our staff, our fellow board members? And most importantly, can we show respect for our residents? Because if it wasn't for them, none of us would be here. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm trustee O'Bell.
About the fire hydrants, as you drive around town, you'll see the new hydrants have a great cover on the big board. It's called the storage connection. It's for the new fire hose, but they're tiny, you know, they're new. There's, I believe there's like six or eight that have been done over the past few years. Car accidents, whatever. 2/21st, Shirley has one, and there's a few others around town. These things are supposed to save lives, as usual. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. Trustee Williams, to answer your question, I think that, I remember early part of this year, Mr. Lowery said that there were, I think between five and 10 that were fixed last year. And so I'm sure that now we have more attention on it, they'll get more done, more expedited. Everybody, continue to stay safe. There is a surge in COVID-19. Continue to wear your masks. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Tarr?
I have nothing at this time.
Trustee Brewer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing is, the issue of the, our table will be put back on the table. Can we address that next week in half, in conference for the residents? And second of all, the, second and third of all, the Salt Village code addresses, when you have two trustees that ask for items to put on the agenda. I'd like to see that addressed. And also, whenever we have contracts in the village, if the contractor is doing work with the village, they should be certified or whatever.
License.
Licensed with the village. So we need to take a look at this. It's something I've been asking for all the time. Because we have contractors who are actually doing work for the village, but nobody's being licensed, or they're not working with the village. So that's something we need to address, but that's the end of my comment.
Trustee Jazinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you was asked with the statements, actions of the village, that all just go to the meeting. Are you talking, like, you're talking all three of those things?
What's being cut? They don't have to be discussed, but it's what I'm done. You know, the accounts payable, all the back pay. And there's something we need to do for the board. Okay.
Because after.
Oh, excuse me, hold on a minute, I'm sorry. This is my, I'm just from the mayor trustees. I don't know, but, okay, I'll talk to you offline after that. I don't know if anybody's. I don't know, everybody didn't know about that, so this is.
No, we won't talk offline, go back there.
There you go. All right.
Are you, are you through?
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Trustee Jazinski?
Just a little respectful. General comments from the air trustees?
Go ahead, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to make a statement. Last Monday, I lost my mother and my best friend. And I would like to thank the emergency services, the ambulance, the fire department, and some fellow trustees that came to my house and supported me and my father while we were going through all this. I would also like to thank you, Mayor, and the board of trustees for the beautiful plant that was sent to my ma's memorial Saturday. And I would also like to thank all the residents and our friends that have reached out to us in this trying time. Thank you very much for thinking about our family, and thank you for this proclamation. My mother did serve a lot of years for this village as a volunteer, and thank you again for all your support.
Thank you, and I'm grateful with you too. Thank you very much. November 3rd is, was declared a holiday by our president. So that being. So that being said, it is a holiday, so village hall will be closed as next Tuesday, as also voting day. So just wanted to let you know that we'll have signs out that village hall will be closed, will be handled as if it's a, it be handled as a holiday. Also, if this, if they go back to phase three, what is hoping that this particular mitigation that's going on now, we just. what is hoping that this particular mitigation that's going on now would just be that, if they go back to phase three, then Village Hall will be closed again. So right now, it's not, it was just stipulated as businesses right now. So Village Hall is still open. And we hope that you, our people that need to come to Village Hall, please come up and take care and do business. So it's not, I want to reiterate, it is not closed. So if you have business with the village, as far as any water or anything of that nature, Village Hall is still open, so that you know that. But November 3rd is a holiday. And the next thing is veterans are celebration. As of this, right now, we're still going to have it here, November 11th at 11 o'clock. But things will may change between now and then. There were, we may have to either be virtual or we just may not have it. But I was just talking, I'm sorry, I was texting last night, emailing. Those who, you know, from phone, text, email, to Zoom, to all that. But anyway, that trustee Williams has a group that wanted to help feed the veterans. And she claimed, she says she's going to, they're going to be doing, the veterans that they have, you know, come pick it up. That may come down to that. I don't know how many people actually come out of that. But right now, the veterans celebration is going to go on. And, but if they doesn't believe me, I will let you guys know before the end of this week is out. They will still be able to have that done. Okay, with that being said, I would like to put a motion to adjourn. The move by trustee, just like by trustee Brewer, that's one, please follow along.
Trustee Jazinski.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Brewer. And trustee Grant.
Motion carried.